Welcome to another meeting of the Lorain County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorain County Community College Education Station. The Lorain County Commissioners cordially invite you to see the meeting live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorain County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Alaria. The meetings start at 9:30 a.m. on most weeks. Now, enjoy the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the September 6th meeting of the Lorain County Board of Commissioners. This Sunday we are celebrating Grandparents' Day, so on behalf of the Board, I'd like to, and some of us are grandparents too.
Great-grandparents too.
Well, aren't we all great-grandparents?
I mean, great-great.
I know what you mean, but I'm saying, aren't we all great-grandparents?
You know what I tell my grandchildren? I've got one that says, "You can't tell me that because you're not my mother." I say, "But you see the grand in the front of that?" That's better than mommy.
Oh, I like that.
Yes.
I have a grandparent.
And that's even.
I'm not a grandparent yet, thank God.
Well, I hope not because you're almost too young. A thought for this weekend included with the grandparents is the greatest hurdle is convincing yourself that what you want is possible. So, happy Grandparents' Day to all of us who are grandparents and to those out there in the audience who are grandparents. I think probably grandchildren are one of the greatest joys of life and you don't know it until you get 'em. We have a 9 o'clock appointment, excuse me, 9:30 with the Huron County Board of Commissioners, and I do not see any Huron County Board of Commissioners here yet. So, Madam Clerk, I would ask you to move to resolutions, and when they arrive, we'll go back to that issue, or the 9:45, whichever comes first.
Okay. Resolutions, I need a motion to approve the jobs and family services bills from hand.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mrs. Vassie.
Aye.
Mrs. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie.
Aye.
Incorporations.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Vassie.
Aye.
Mrs. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie.
Aye.
There are no advances today. Repositions.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Vassie.
I, on number 17, 24, 25, and 26. I vote no on those. In the Record Center, we should include in the Journal that that's going to be reimbursed by the Jobs and Family Services. And we have a letter from Mary Lou. And it wrote yes on the others.
Okay. Mrs. Vassie, Mrs. Blair.
I vote aye with no exceptions.
Mr. Moore.
Aye, no exceptions.
Travel expenses.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie.
Aye.
Approving bills for payment.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Vassie.
Aye.
Mrs. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
I'd authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within the jurisdictions in the Lorain County Commissioners.
Commissioners, I will be requesting an executive session for the specific purpose of talking about new hires and purchase of, potential purchase of real estate, and I would like to hold that off until we have the executive session.
Thank you.
I'd authorize the Lorain County Auditor to levy special assessments for water line maintenance against all the property in, I should put, various established county sewer districts. The assessments are to become effective for the tax duplicate year 2001, collectible in the year 2002.
So moved.
Second, but someone's here from the Engineers Department. Can you, John, can you explain this for the benefit of the public? I mean, it's something we do periodically, but I don't think the public is real clear on special assessments and what it means to them in an increase.
From the county engineers, I'm not real familiar with that. You know, Jack Januzzi works on the water sewer side, but there's a special assessment, I think it's yearly, for water line maintenance that were assessed when they originally poured in for construction. There's a percentage collected for continuing maintenance on it for repairing water breaks and things that happen to the line.
And this is done annually for special assessment?
Yes.
It's not something that's new, so the public's not going to get a new tax?
No, it's a continuous thing.
Right.
Oh, and there was music. Did that come from heaven or what?
John speaks, that's what happens. Karen's hiding now.
Does that satisfy your question?
I think it makes it a little bit clearer. Thank you.
Mrs. Blair.
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
I'd certify a delinquent sanitary sewer council to Lorain County Auditor for collection on the 2001 tax duplicate, collection year 2002.
Also moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair.
These are for, these are delinquent taxes that are owed for the various sanitary sewer plants that the county engineer is in charge of, and apparently these are outstanding, and so this is a way to collect them so that we can pay the bills associated with running those various plants.
Mrs. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie.
Aye.
I'd authorize the addition or deletion of personnel within the Children's Services Department for the use of their Shell Oil Gasling Credit Card for 2001.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair.
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
I'd issue the following notice to proceed letters on various projects to Kokosin Construction Incorporated of Fredericks Town, Ohio, for the Baumhart Road Paved Berm Project and for our Columbia West River Road Resurfacing Project. These are both effective September 4th, 2001.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie.
Aye.
I'd to approve and enter into contract between the Board of Commissioners and Richland Engineering Limited of Mansfield, Ohio, in the amount of $160,529 for engineering services for the Middle Ridge Road Resurfacing Project from Amherst Corporation Line to South Amherst Corporation Line. This section of road is about 3.12 miles in length and is estimated to cost approximately $2,200,000. County engineer has conducted the consultant selection process as adopted by the Commissioners by Resolution Number 96-850. The engineer has reviewed and recommends approval. Funds are available in the engineer's bond fund, and we now authorize a purchase order from the bond funds.
I will so move. Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Hamilton, did you have comments for the Board regarding this?
This is a project that's been programmed through ODOT, it's on the NOACATIP. We're looking to have the plans done by next April for possible construction next summer. Tentatively, it's on the NOACATIP for the following year, but it can be moved to this year, you know, pending the money being available.
Questions?
Mrs. Blair.
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Thank you, John.
I'd authorize the county engineer to file a grant application with the Federal Emergency Management Agency to update and include the 100-year storm project. In June, the Commissioners have approved the county becoming a cooperating technical partner with FEMA, which allows the county to apply for grants to update the floodplain maps. The engineer has recently received a grant package to apply for $100,000 grant to do hydraulic and hydrologic analysis in the county. The county currently has an agreement with the United States Geological Survey to perform hydraulic analysis and determine a 10-year water surface profile for the nine ditches throughout the county. This is being funded with $174,000 county funds and $120,000 in USGS funds. This grant would expand the current study to include the 10-year storm. This is a 100 percent grant with no local share. We'd like to authorize the county engineer to sign the grant application.
So moved. Second, and again, John, would you just like to briefly outline what this is because this is a longstanding project that various entities have worked on? And I think it's wonderful that we've gotten to this point, but I think we need a little bit more information.
Yeah, when we originally discovered USGS money was available, we sort of anticipated this FEMA funding coming eventually, and the 10-year storm water profile will be used for designing improvements in the drainage systems, detention basins, ditch cleaning, be able to determine what effect that'll have on the water surface profile downstream. And this, the 100-year storm profile is what's used for the flood insurance boundaries, so it's very important to people who live along the channel. And it's 100 percent grant, no local share. The other 174,000 county funds that were previously approved is ongoing. I think they're coming up next week for an update on where they're at, but they have most of the survey work done on the nine ditches, and I think they're working on two or three of the models right now.
But this is for the 100-year plan flood, also for the, for the next, right? I mean, you're just basically continuing?
Yeah, the original was for a 10-year storm profile, which would be a storm that would happen once every 10 years theoretically would give you the flood level of that storm. This will give you the flood level of 100-year storm, so that to expand the cross-sections out on the channel to show how, how wide that reach would be.
Okay, that's just, so you're just getting the information to, just to see what that's going to happen? I mean, basically the plan?
They'll actually map the, map the floodplain area that that 100-year storm will affect. They'll change the FEMA maps that Ron's Office uses, and we'll also have that available on disk for design, you know, if there's things you can do to lower that 100-year floodplain.
Are you, now, this is what we're going to use in the future to help manage some of our flooding issues in the county?
Yes.
Okay, are you in contact with Dan Martin at all in Metro Parks with this, with these issues, or?
Somewhat.
Somewhat?
Yeah.
Okay, I've been talking to some of the agencies out there, like Rural Water and Metro Parks, and what I found out is nobody's really communicating with each other, and there's a lot of opportunity for everybody to kind of use some of their expertise and services to maybe alleviate some of our flooding problems in the county. And I didn't know if that's, you know, what I found out was that no, all you need is that first say, "Hey, can we get together?" And I don't know if you guys have any communications with Metro Parks in doing this type of design work to maybe, once you get the plan, to work with them, to maybe have something cooperative to get, to resolve some of these issues? Because they do get a lot of calls on flooding in this county, so.
The original program included the money for the ditch cleaning, and Metro Parks was involved, I think, on two of them.
Okay.
And then the money for these studies. And we'll probably really get involved with Metro Parks when we get the results of these studies back and we get into designing locations for detention basins.
Correct. Okay, good. As long as you got the doors of communication going, that's all that matters. Okay, great.
I think the Alliance has helped in those communications as well. That was one of the issues that stormwater, just the fact that stormwater doesn't pay any attention to political boundaries, and I think this idea was discussed at length in the Alliance, so that there is that cooperative effort from the various different political entities.
And this also, can you explain to the public how this helps with their insurance?
Well, the way the flood insurance maps are now, they have what they call Zone A, which is a real undefined area of flooding. So if your house is somewhere near that area, you have to get flood insurance or prove you're out of the flood zone. With this, they'll have elevations attached to them so they can actually survey that house, see what elevation it's at compared to 100-year flood, and they may be out of the flood zone and therefore out of the flood insurance area.
I think it will also be helpful for, for new construction so that it will not be allowed to be built in a floodplain, so that we won't be faced with these issues in the future.
Right.
Thanks, John. Any other questions?
Good.
Thank you, John.
Madam Clerk.
Mrs. Vassie.
Aye.
Mrs. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Would you like to stop for 9:45 now?
Yes. We have a 9:45 appointment with Ron Twining, our Community Development Director, Avon Lake Mayor, Rob Burner, good morning, Mayor, Assistant Law Director, Tim Degreter, Thomas Strick from Poly One, and Dennis McFander from Ernst &amp; Young, consultants on a tax abatement for Poly One. Good morning, Ron.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ron Twining, I am the Community Development Director for Lorain County. Spelling of the last name is T.W.I.N.I.N.G. We are very pleased to report to the Commissioners that this morning we are before you to talk about a potential tax abatement project in Avon Lake for Poly One. They're looking to expand their operation and make a commitment to Lorain County to, to retain jobs here as well as create new jobs. Melanie Long from our staff has worked closely with them on this tax abatement. We were invited into the discussions that were conducted by the, the city of Avon Lake, and at this point, I would turn the podium over to Mayor Burner so that he can explain the project to the Commissioners and answer any questions that you might have. Mayor?
Just a few comments on a few of the issues that are facing Avon Lake. Poly One is probably one of our best corporate citizens. I won't say the best because we have other citizens in the, in the community, but they've been very good to our community over the years. They've expanded, they've done a number of different community services, they've been involved in Northeast Ohio Social Service, or Northeast Lorain County Social Services, volunteering and donating money in the community, and they've also been very active in our school programs with our access program. They came to us and basically presented the idea for a Center for Manufacturing Excellence for their manufactured materials division, or engineered plastics materials division, and asked us if we would work with them on an abatement issue and an enterprise zone issue. And my feelings were that the state of our economy at the time and currently, that it's certainly something that we want to encourage them to continue to be a good corporate citizen and to expand their operation. This enterprise zone agreement that they're requesting will create a minimum of 35 new jobs, and it is a 10-year, 100 percent abatement issue that they're requesting. We have full support of our council, we have full support of our Board of Education, and the details are pretty much worked out up to the point of bringing it here to the county to petition you for your support also. And I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that the Commissioners may have at this time.
Can you tell me when the 35 new jobs are, how long it will take before they're created?
The goal of the projection on that is 2003.
They will have, uh...
They'll have higher 35 employees by the year 2003. That's 2003 is when 35 will be created. They're going to gradually move to that point.
Will those be local people?
The goal is to try to get some local people. Some of them will be transferred in though because they are, some of the jobs that they're bringing in are a result of some of their consolidation efforts, and so some of the jobs that are being created in Lorain County are coming from outside of the county as a result of people being transferred in that have the technical skills necessary for this division.
And assuming these people that will then reside in Lorain County?
Well, would be, we'd encourage them to reside in Lorain County. We have a number of residents already in Avon Lake that are, you know, work for Poly One. I would say a good majority of all Poly One employees currently do live in Avon Lake or Lorain County. You know, again, I'm not going to guarantee that every employee lives in Lorain County, but we have a large majority between Avon Lake, Sheffield, Sheffield Lake, and Lorain. I would venture to say that that's probably 70, 75 percent of their current workforce.
Other questions?
That's all I have.
Mr. Twining, I assume you have a recommendation from your department regarding this issue? Thank you, Mayor.
The Community Development Department, while this is 100 percent abatement for 10 years, and it's a little bit higher than what we normally would feel most comfortable with, this has been a policy of the Board of Commissioners to allow the local jurisdiction to negotiate those abatements. Basically, the, the county level from the county's general fund bonded indebtedness is about 2% out of every dollar that you're abating over that 10-year period of new money associated with this, and it's only about 7% of all of the countywide agencies that receive money. We want to point that out so that you take that into consideration. The Alliance's share of, of taxes, property taxes that are paid on a project like this go to the local jurisdiction, primarily the schools. The company has worked closely with the school district and has made arrangements through this tax abatement to continue to, to make a, a payment to the schools in lieu of this tax abatement. We are to get a letter before we send this to the state, a resolution from the local school board supporting this because it's over 75 percent. We're required by state law to have the local board approve that. They were at the table. I think that the action has already taken place. I'm not sure as of today whether we have the actual resolution from the school board, but we will have that prior to submitting to the state of Ohio. We do recommend support for this project, and Tom Strick is here from Poly One if you would like any comments from, from Tom himself. The last and final comment that I would make is not only is Poly One a, a good corporate citizen for Lorain County, they also are, are helping diversify the employment base in our industrial areas in Lorain County. We're getting primarily into some of the, the plastics and things like that rather than just strictly the auto-related industries, so it's nice to support them. They have received tax abatement in the past, and from that tax abatement, they have not only exceeded their employment letters, levels, but have also been able to expand and do some mergers because of the level of abatement that's been offered. So our recommendation is to approve this.
Thank you, Ron. Um, Strick, did you have any comments that you'd like to make for the Board?
I'd just like to echo a few of the comments that you've heard already with respect to giving perhaps a little bit broader explanation of what Poly One is currently working with the city of Avon Lake to accomplish. Right now, Poly One is just recently coming upon its first anniversary, was formed by the merger of the former M.A. Hanna Company and Geon Company. And as we put the two companies together, we decided to take a good look around and see what was very good about the two companies independently and what were the areas of improvement. So we did several studies internally as well as meeting externally with our customers, our suppliers, and some of the things that they mentioned was that we need to broaden the scope of some of our manufacturing facilities, and hence that's why we decided to create a center of manufacturing excellence. Some of the plants were, you're very, very focused in small market segments, or they tried to be something to everyone. We had no in-between in our customers and suppliers as well as the overall market. We're telling them that we really need to expand that coverage. So what we're looking at doing right now in Avon Lake is we're going to make a major capital investment in the plant, we're going to create new jobs, and most importantly, what we're going to do is we're going to introduce an entirely new product family into this facility. Today, as it stands in Avon Lake, our manufacturing capabilities basically revolve around vinyl compounding. So we are heavily dependent upon several major customers, one or two major markets in a small geographical area. That really is what supports that plant today. In our plan in creating the Center for Manufacturing Excellence, we're going to expand its capabilities so it's now going to have the ability to begin manufacturing, or for just engineered compounds, it's our primarily plastic manufacturing. What this will allow us to do is it's going to expand the base of customers we serve, it's going to expand the geographical market that we serve as well as the industry. So it's going to provide a rather large buffer to the local county and entire community right now, which is heavily dependent upon just a handful of customers in one or two industries. So this is going to help us ride out some of the times, you know, that the economy's in overall downturn. So it's, it's a tremendous opportunity for, for the local community.
Thank you, Mr. Strick. Does the Board have any further questions or comments?
No, I have none.
I'd just like to say that in my past experience, I have, I know that Poly One is a, a strong supporter of the local school system, especially from their supporting of the Access One program, and I think that's been good for Avon Lake, and it's helped a lot of the students in their ongoing venture for education. So if there's no further comments from the Board, I move that we approve the tax abatement as outlined, subject to receiving the needed letter from the local school board. Second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair.
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie.
Aye.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor, and Mr. Strick Incorporated. At this time, I would like to return to the joint meeting that the Lorain County Board of Commissioners is to have with the Huron County Board of Commissioners, who are in attendance. Terry Booz as the President, good morning, Terry, Artith Chup, and Michael Adelman. And did you bring your clerk too?
No.
Okay, well, her name is here, so I want, you know, I have a fondness for clerks. I wanted to introduce her if she was in attendance. The purpose of our meeting this morning is the Draper Ditch, and annually, we meet to, to approve and certify assessments for this Huron Lorain County unique ditch, and the item that appears on the agenda says, "And to authorize 20 percent reduction in maintenance rates for David R. Ross's parcel." Last year, we went to Huron, so it was nice of you to come to our facility this morning. Is there someone here that wants to speak to this issue from the Engineers' Office?
I do have one.
Would you please come to the microphone and state your name and...
I'm Don Ruffing with the Huron County Soil and Water District. In Huron County, the Soil and Water District is doing the maintenance work for the county engineers, so that's why I'm here and set up somebody from the county engineers' office. The, on the reduction for David Ross, I was thinking that was, we did a 20 percent reduction last year for, for maintenance berms. The reduction this year, I think, was on a tile reduction, and that, as I saw here, it should have been like a 6.9 percent?
Yes, I'm sorry. I think that the paperwork that I have from you here in Soil and Water Conservation District in fact says a new base with 6.9 percent reduction.
I didn't know if anybody had any questions or concerns on that reduction. I could, I could go over that briefly if you wish.
Would you just like to explain that briefly?
In Huron County, there's, we have a, a policy that gives people reductions for, for doing conservation practices on these maintenance ditches, and the revised code allows a reduction of up to 50 percent for owners doing conservation work. And it's what we've done in Huron County is for different types of things, we've given different percentage reductions. The, the reduction for the berms is 20 percent, the reduction for the tile would be 10 percent, but since we're only given a reduction on the areas of a parcel that are tiled, this particular parcel has wooded areas on it that aren't tiled, so basically 69 percent of that parcel is tiled, so we're using a 6.9 percent reduction instead of the 10 to, to correspond with, with that 10 percent. So, and that, and David Ross, they had made the application to our Soil and Water District Office. The code says that there needs to be a certification from the Soil and Water District to the, to the Commissioners, which is that letter that, that I sent on behalf of the, on behalf of the Soil and Water District Board, so, and, so that's kind of explains that a little bit.
Okay.
All righty.
Are there any other questions, either from this Board or your Board? If not, since I believe this is a formality, I would move that our joint Boards approve the certification of assessments as outlined.
I will second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Booz. Madam Clerk, would you call the role for both the Lorainian Huron County Boards of Commissioners?
Any more discussion?
Pardon me?
Any more discussion? Got to call for that discussion. Mrs. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Booz.
Yes, aye.
Mr. Moore.
Okay, aye.
Ms. Chup.
Yeah.
Mrs. Vassie.
Aye.
Mr. Adelman.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's unanimous. Two Boards, unanimous, six votes, that's great. Have you any words of wisdom for us this morning?
No, I don't think so.[1742.83]
I thought it was interesting. We just gave an abatement for Poly One and Huron County, but our last week, so some issue won't be walked in.
Good. So they're doing wonderful things in northeastern Ohio.
Yes, they are.
Thank you. Thank you for your attendance this morning. Roxanne, do you have documents here?
I think Teresa needs to prepare it with the motions and things, so...
Okay. We'll take care of the paperwork then. We have nothing available right now. Jerry, are we all set?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you so much for coming this morning. There's coffee in the back if you need something for your journey back to Huron County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, will we return to page three, item number sixteen? I believe that's where we left off.
I'm going to have to read this with a correction. "Would you approve the monies from the County General Fund during the next five years for the Lorraine County Community Alliance while membership fees and additional grants, contracts are secured? Lorraine County Community College does provide office space, computer and Internet connection, telephones, copier, fax, office assistant support, and administrative time of the PSI Director. Our five-year commitment would be on a sliding scale for 2002 would be thirty-five thousand dollars, 2003 thirty-five thousand dollars, 2004 thirty thousand dollars, for 2005 thirty thousand dollars, and for the year 2006, twenty-five thousand dollars."
Thank you. Rebecca Gray, the Administrative Coordinator of the Alliance, is in the audience together with Teresa McCoy, who is the Director of the Public Services Institute, which the Alliance has a contract with the Houss and take care of various functions there. Teresa, would you just like to make a few comments to the board regarding this request?
Teresa McCoy, Director of the Public Services Institute. Good morning, Commissioners. I think Commissioner Moore used the words that are appropriate for the purpose of the Alliance, and that is keeping the doors of communication open between the many entities in the county. The Alliance was funded six years ago by our local foundations, and we have continued to use that money plus our membership dues over the past six years to fund the Alliance. And what we're doing now is putting together a package for sustainable funding for the Alliance, which includes a combination of continued grants and contracts, in-kind support from the Community College, membership fees, and then this request for funding from the county. I do believe it's important, as we go forward to local foundations and other foundations in the region and throughout the country, that they see a commitment on the part of the county in order to sustain this alliance. So we feel that this commitment from the Commissioners is very important to our future. Thank you.
Teresa, does the board have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I'm really concerned. Teresa, I understand that the Alliance is, possibly has, an application into the Nordson Foundation. And I think we're kind of putting the cart before the horse because you don't know if you're receiving that or how much you're going to receive. And then there was a fax to Commissioner Blair that stated that there's a possibility that you may have to increase the fees, membership fees. Without this information, I think we're putting the cart before the horse. Because on your, on the information that you provided in the budget, it states that the year 2002, the total budget would be eighty-five thousand dollars.
Correct.
Well, and then it also, like, the membership fees, it lists at ten thousand, grant contracts fifteen thousand, Lorraine County Commissioners thirty-five thousand, and the college has twenty-five thousand in-kind.
Correct.
Okay, since you don't know what you're going to get, or if you're going to, from the Nordson Foundation, or if you're going to increase the fees, I think it's kind of premature to come before the Commissioners and request money.
Actually, coming to the Commissioners, I, we do have a proposal before the Nordson Corporation Foundation, actually a meeting with their representative after this meeting. I think that a commitment from the Commissioners is going to be critical in terms of any of the foundations being willing to fund a contract. So actually, I see this as the critical first step.
Can, can you explain to me what the Alliance has done in the past six years? Can you give me some idea of what they've done?
First of all, the, one of the things that we've done on a continual basis is the networking and communication, trying to make sure that the left hand knows what the right hand is doing, providing a forum where governmental representatives can get together. We were also heavily involved in the railroad issue, which I'm sure many of you know about. The Alliance has also worked in terms of having our Lorraine County voice present on a regional basis through NOAACA and other organizations, making sure that Lorraine County is represented in those kinds of conversations. Also, we've been involved in bulk purchases, salt purchase, looking at the electric situation, gas situation, bulk purchase, some things like that.
All right. I have always questioned with the Alliance, if this networking and communication couldn't be done more simpler and with less money by just meetings? I think, you know, that the local communities can get together at a table and sit around and discuss the issues. And furthermore, NOAACA, we have representation there. And I don't, I don't know how further representation could assist the county. And it's my understanding that not all the townships even belong to the Alliance. They're not all members.
We don't have all townships. We do have six of the townships. We now have all cities and villages. So actually, when you look at the population that the Alliance represents in Lorraine County, it's ninety-four percent of the population of the county.
And with the Commissioners being on board, I would suggest that it's a hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
Yes. Are there further questions or comments? If not, I would like to approve the, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request as outlined.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
I want to thank you, Teresa and Rebecca, for all your hard work. I'd like to put a plug in for the summit that's coming up on Friday, November the second. We had a meeting yesterday and worked on that. And I think that there's good things to come from the Alliance, and I'm pleased to be a part of it. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
Can I advertise for bids for the installation of the Middle Avenue Resurfacing Project? This authorization was contingent upon approval by Ohio Department of Transportation and the FHWA, which approval has been received. Federal funds will be used to pay for this improvement. We have to publish the notice in the Chronicle Telegram and Morning Journal on September third, tenth, and seventeenth, 2001.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
"I'd authorize a salary increase for Sue Danielson Bailiff for the Lorraine Municipal Court, effective retroactive to July twenty-seventh, 2001. The bi-weekly rate will increase from six hundred forty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents to six hundred sixty dollars and sixty-three cents, and this amount reflects the county's two-fish year."
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
"I'd like to amend Resolution Number Zero One dash two forty-six that was adopted in March twenty-second, 2001, which awarded BFI the contract for hauling services for Pride Day. This resolution indicated that Recycle Ohio Grant will pay for seventeen thousand dollars, and the district will pay the balance not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. The City of Sheffield Lake had an extra haul, bringing the total invoice to twenty thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars. The City of Sheffield Lake will reimburse the district for three hundred ninety-one dollars, and the total money is required from the district funds will be three thousand dollars."
So moved.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
"I'd like to amend Resolution Number Zero One dash five ninety-one that was adopted June twenty-first, 2001, authorizing the purchase of a CAFIS five-hundred automated fingerprint identification system for the Lorraine County Crime Lab to Cogent Systems Incorporated of California in the amount of eighty-four thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. This amendment is to reflect the extended annual maintenance fee for the system, which is eight thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars, which will be paid out of the crime lab levy funds. This is strictly an administrative housekeeping resolution."
Roxanne, your note said that Detective Willis would be at here?
He's in the back.
Where is he hiding?
In the back.
Oh, thank you. Would you like to just make a brief comment to the board about this? Come to the microphone, please. And identify yourself.
I'm Scott Willis. I'm with the Alaria Base Department. I'm assigned to the Detective Bureau. Just wanted to say, back in February, the Chiefs of Police came to me. We were closing down the crime lab at the college, and we moved Jody Ganda, who is also present, the fingerprint examiner, into our building to work. The Chiefs of Police, in return, asked me to research possibly getting the AFIS system into the county, which I did. And we were able to locate Cogent Systems. And also present is Jerry Schmidt, from California, from Cogent. I just wanted to say that the program is going along real well, and that we would like to thank the Commissioners and Sheriff's DeMetti and the Chiefs of Police for their continuous effort in helping us solve crime here in the county. It's going to be a benefit to all the police departments, not just Alaria or the Sheriff's Department. It's pretty much a major undertaking, and we're going to be the fifth county in the state of Ohio that'll have this system. And from what I understand from Mr. Schmidt, maybe he can reflect a little bit more on it if he'd like. That the system that we're getting is actually more advanced than what the FBI is currently using. With me, I have the two signed contracts from Cogent also for the Commissioners. Whoever wants to take those.
Well, our clerk takes care of all the lovely paperwork.
And, you know, if you'd, if you'd like to hear from Mr. Schmidt, he's here, and he could reflect a little bit more on the system.
Mr. Schmidt?
California, Mike.
How's the weather in California?
It's not as nice as it is here.
I like that.
Thank you, Scott. Madam Chairperson, members of the Commission, my name is Jerry Schmidt. I'm Director of Sales and Marketing for Cogent Systems Incorporated. We're located in South Pasadena. And as Scott mentioned, the system that the county has invested in is one that is not just, it's got a long-term life cycle associated with it. It does represent state-of-the-art fingerprint technology. It, for example, is the first of its kind, which has a fully integrated automated palm and fingerprint capability. The significance there being that crime scenes typically yield, thirty percent of crime scenes, that is, yield nothing but latent palm print evidence. And historically, systems have not been able to identify those with the same speed and accuracy as a fingerprint identification system can. So in this case, it's a fully integrated system, which will enable crime scene investigators to identify that additional thirty percent of the crime scenes. And as he mentioned, it is in fact, a little bit ahead of what, for example, even the FBI or Interpol or Scotland Yard is currently operating. And so I'm here personally to thank the county. I think that it is a very wise investment. It will be fully integrated with the state system located in London, Ohio. And so failing an identification here against the local database operators will be able to search against the statewide system in London as well.
So this will just be a statewide? Will it just be connected up through statewide or will it be hooked up nationally?
Cogent is fully compliant with not just federal but international standards as it relates to the capture and storage and transmission of fingerprint data. When the state ultimately hooks up with the federal system that threw the switch, I think, a year ago this past July, then not only the state, but local agencies in the state of Ohio that use this kind of technology will be able to search against the federal database.
And will there be more charges for us to connect into that, or is it just basically just plugging in and...
No, sir. It's basically a drop-down menu where you select those additional agencies that you want to search against.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Any further questions from the board?
And this is a countywide, everybody in the county will be able to participate because I've been, I've been doing some speaking. Everyone's wondering about the Sheriff's Department. It doesn't affect everybody, but this is something I think that everybody can use, right? Every agency in the county can use this, this system, correct?
Absolutely. Although every agency will not have a workstation per se, I'm sure that with...
But they could go to a station that could, that has that ability to...
Yes, sir.
To download or...
Yes. And the database that they access is one that contains all those...
The equipment is going to be housed at EPD, the police department. That's correct?
Yes.
And this is funded through the crime lab levy monies, so...
Okay.
It wasn't a general fund expenditure.
Will there be a charge from Alaria Police Department for the other departments to use this?
No. Basically, what it is is...
Could you come to the microphone, please?
She learned, never sit down.
Thank you, Detective.
Basically, what it is, is Jody Ganda is still a county employee, and she's still employed under the Lorraine County Crime Lab. Even though we closed the crime lab down out at the Community College, the Chiefs of Police and Sheriff's DeMetti felt that we still needed her in the county to be able to do fingerprint work for all of the departments. We having a little bigger building and having a lab that we had that had the room for, we moved her actually from the college to Alaria Police Department. So even though she's working in our building, she's a county employee and will still be doing work for all the departments in Lorraine County. What they currently do is if they have any fingerprint analysis that needs done, just like they did with the crime lab, they bring their evidence to our department, turn it over to Jody Ganda, and she does the examination there. So it's still covering all the departments in Lorraine County, the sheriff. So that's pretty much it.
Can I, can I just ask Jody to stand up, please? By the way, she, she is your employee.
Well, I think she should come forward so we can see her here, too.
We moved Jody to the Commissioner's payroll, which is refunded from the, from the crime lab levy. And I don't think we had an opportunity to introduce her to any of the board members while we were working on that this spring.
Good morning. Good morning, Jody.
Hi. Hello.
And it sounds to me like this is a wonderful cooperative effort among the various political subdivisions to provide a very necessary service.
Yes.
I wanted to commend you all. You have something to say, Jody?
Yeah, well, at first, I'd like to, I came out to the college. I was just out there for a year, and when it closed, I just wanted to thank you for keeping me on board that I'm over at Alaria doing work for the county, getting cases. Now, I've got a backlog, and what this AFIS will eliminate now, when I have latents that I can't identify, there's not a known suspect to compare to, I take the latent print to Richfield, Ohio, and search their state, the state through that. And we've gotten results for Lorraine, Sheriff's Office, Alaria. And with getting the CAFIS system in Lorraine County, it'll be a matter of the agency can wait. If the latent prints are good, we can scan them through, see if they have a match, and they'll know. They'll leave with knowing if there's an identification or not. And even if there isn't, the latent print will stay in file, and possibly down the road, the person that the latent print belonged to might get arrested for something else, and it'll, we can match it up at a later time. So once we start making hits and identifications with the agencies, they'll hopefully be coming to Lorraine PD with a lot of cases and latent prints.
It will help solve issues faster, more speedily.
Oh, yeah. The state, they just moved to a new beautiful laboratory in Richfield, but they're running oh, months behind. I'm hoping, unless it gets too busy, but I'm hoping that too, that they'll be able to hand me the latent print. I can scan it and search it and tell them, here's your person, or not.
Good. Wonderful. Other questions? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I would move that we approve the amendment to reflect the extended annual maintenance fee for this system at eight thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars.
Second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you.
"I'd like to approve and enter into contract between the Department of Job and Family Services and St. Thomas the Apostle Preschool Daycare in Sheffield Lake, Ohio, effective retroactive to July twentieth, 2001, through December thirty-first, 2001. Funds are available from their daycare fund, which is reimbursed by the state of Ohio. I'd authorize the present, checks due on behalf of the board."
So moved.
I'll second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
"I'd authorize the Ohio Department of Transportation to review the Speed Zone Study for North Ridge Road within Lorraine County of approximately point three seven nine miles. The Erie County Engineer performed a traffic study on Trentor Road from State Route sixty to the Erie County line, and since they were so close to North Ridge Road, they also studied this section. The study indicated a warranted speed of forty miles per hour. Owe doubt we'll need to review and make a determination of the speed limit. Lorraine County Engineer has reviewed and recommends approval."
So moved.
Discussion? Mrs. Vassie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
"I'd authorize a local match from the County General Fund of fourteen thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars for the FAA grant recently allocated to Lorraine County Regional Airport. The grant award is in the amount of one hundred forty-nine thousand eight hundred sixty dollars, and funds were granted under the terms of the fiscal year 2001 Airport Improvement Program to conduct the airport master plan study. study. The FAA has indicated that this grant will be available in early to mid-September.
I'll move.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Moore? I'm sorry.
Some discussion. I'm just wondering if they can't find that $15,000 doesn't seem like a lot of money, and if they can't find that within the budget. I think we give them almost $400,000 a year, and it seems $15,000 is a lot.
We give more than that, I think. I think we give more than that.
Even better yet. If we give them more, you mean they can't find $15,000 to pick up almost $150,000? Have they been asked to look for the money within their own budget?
Mike Boss and I have not had an opportunity to dialogue on that. You and I spoke yesterday, and I was going to speak to him in the afternoon, but we were not able to make the connection yet.
Another thing that bothers me, too, we give all these entities money, but we never get reports. We get auditors' reports at the end of the year, but we never get a report on what they do with our money, what other revenue they have coming in. I'd like to see something on a quarterly basis for all the non-mandated departments and agencies that we give money to, that they report back to us and let us know what they do with our money.
I think that the airport, perhaps it's in conjunction with the FBI, but I think we've been getting monthly reports on their income and expenses. I'm not sure what else it includes.
I think it should include--
And I just also like to make reference to their August 16th agenda. This is not the only item that they're going to ask us for money for, okay? I don't think.
Well, no, this is, the last time they did a master plan study was about 12 years ago. That was my understanding. And to get the $150,000, it's my understanding that we have to come up with local match, which is 15 grand to get 150.
Correct.
A local match could be from their budget, too, though.
That's the same money. I mean, we already took a quarter of a million dollars away from them, so I don't know how much they anticipated spending that money.
A minute ago, you said we give them more than $400,000, and now I'm sure we took some money away from them because--
No, we did. We took $250,000 away to Sheriff's Committee that's sitting out there. See, I got them to look real quick. You see that? So I think they still have on their capital improvement budget, they still have another $800,000 in their capital improvement budget.
Approximately, they had some expenditures, and we did transfer $250,000, so there's about another $800. I think their budget was originally for $1.2 for equipment.
And I think they're asking for eight to 10 million dollars to do their rehab out there, which I know that's going to be another discussion. And I think the board directors I've talked to have explained to me that they think they can do the whole project for less than $400,000. So I think the airport's going to be an issue this next three months. And I think to take this off the table, because we need a master plan, to have the federal government come up with $150,000. I'm not going to, I think we're going to have a bigger issue with the airport pretty soon than $15,000. I think we're going to be able to do some great things out there pretty soon, but--
But could the board at least wait to find out if they do have that available in their budget?
I was thinking about that, but I talked to one of the members this morning to say, hey, you know, can we table this? And they're saying, no, it's important that we get this master plan money from the federal government before they change their mind. So I thought, well, for $15,000 to get $149,000, I wasn't going to make it an issue.
Would a week be detrimental?
It was, explained to me it might be, and I thought, well, I'm not going to have 15 grand hold up 150, so. Because I think we're going to have bigger issues than $15,000 pretty soon out there.
I know we are.
It'll work. It'll work out. It always does in the end.
Your optimism is healthy.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vasey?
I'll say aye, but I would certainly like to have held up for a week to find out if they could find that money within their budget.
I'd like to approve and enter into a sublease agreement between the Board of Commissioners and Lorraine National Bank for the office space of approximately 1,100 square feet, located at 124 Middle Avenue, Alaria, Ohio. Term of this lease is effective October 1, 2001, through September 30, 2003, in the annual amount of $9,900, which is based upon $9 a square foot. I'd authorize the President to execute on behalf of the board.
Mr. Cordez, would you like to expand upon the necessity for this?
This is part of a program that the county auditor started within the last three months. They were contracting out for some real estate assessment work. They have since decided, after a cost-benefit analysis, that that work would best be done in-house for significant savings, approximately $90,000 a year. Therefore, they were hiring employees and purchasing the equipment necessary to do this. Unfortunately, absent, you know, gluing some desks to the ceiling in this building, we don't have any space left to house people. So they need someplace to house these folks, and this was available space. I looked over the lease agreement. It's passed through the prosecutor's office. It's a two-year agreement with a non-renewal. We took the renewal clause out. The bank was agreeable to that. I think until the Justice Center is up and we free up some space, we're going to have considerably more need to either purchase or we'll be renting additional space. We're completely out of space, Commissioner.
Don't we have space where solid waste is over there? How many employees are going to move over to this location?
There's going to be three or four employees from my discussions with the auditor's office. Do we have space over there? Well, the answer is yes, no, Commissioner. The space, there's a lot of space in the building. Is it usable space? No.
It could be renovated. For $9,000, $9 a square foot, it probably could be renovated.
$9 a square foot is a very attractive rental price, I think.
It's aggressive. I went through the building. The good portion of the building Mr. Billman's in, it's kind of nice. The other portion of the building that's not as nice is going to house the construction manager and their people for the Justice Center building, so we can avoid having to have rental trailers on the lot. So that would only leave us with the upper portion of that building. And I got to tell you, Commissioner, we'll probably be looking at $100,000 to renovate that upper floor in that building. Dan, you're here. Would you speak to that issue of the upper floor of the building that you're in?
Dan Dole, the County Director for the County, B.I.L.L.M.A.N. The upper floors are in quite disarray. It's a solid structure, I would say, but ceilings are ripped out, all the doors are off. The windows, if you put anybody upstairs, would have to be probably replaced in their entirety. There's probably six or seven or eight of them, and basically they're all leaking. In fact, there's an order to just board up some of the windows upstairs rather than have to replace them at this point in time. It would take quite a large sum of money, I think, to rehab that if it would have to be. There's no power up there. We just run some power the other day because we're using it for storage, and we need some lights up there after they board up the windows.
And, thanks, Dan. On top of that, we don't have an occupancy permit from the City of Alaria to utilize that space because there's structural problems with the foundation downstairs on the building. Is the building good enough to be rehabbed? Yes. It can be a nice building. Is it right now? No. And we need some space by the 1st of October for these folks.
We're going into executive session to discuss possible purchases, and this could probably be part of that discussion.
Yes, it can be. And once again, I'm open to any suggestions, Commissioner. Basically, I realize that I like to be owner rather than renter. I've said that many times.
Well, it's just for a matter of two years, and I just wondered if they couldn't find space in the other building. But anyway, this is going to come out of their real estate assessment--
That's correct. We will not be paying that.
It won't come out of the general fund.
That's correct, Commissioner.
So what is the pleasure of the board?
Do you want to hold this until after those discussions on the real estate, Commissioner?
Yeah, because I'd be interested if we get a one-year lease on this one, because I don't think we can do anything this year.
Why don't we hold it, and we come back out and do that after we have our discussions on real estate purchase?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 25, Madam Clerk.
Need to amend Resolution Number 01-739 that was adopted August 2, 2001, which authorized a refund of conveyance fee in the amount of $201,512.80 to the Avon Lake Power Plant. After discussions with the Lorraine County Auditor, it was discovered that the correct recipient of the refund is Duquesne Light Company. So this amendment was to be reflected that the refund should be made payable to the Duquesne Light Company.
This is merely to change the name to the appropriate company. I'll so move.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vasey?
Aye. This refund was actually because they paid twice, wasn't it?
That's correct, Commissioner. They were eligible for a waiver on the second transfer conveyance fee. They weren't aware of that until they made the payment, and we passed a resolution just a couple months ago, well, a couple weeks ago, to give them back that conveyance fee. This is just housekeeping, as Commissioner Blair said.
Authorized payment of $1,000 to the Doven Funeral Home for burial costs related to indigent veteran Howard E. Pierce. Documentation has been provided, and payment is based upon recommendation of the Lorraine County Veteran Services Agency and the requirements stated in Highway Vice Code Section 5901.26.
I'll move. Second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vasey?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye. Did we vote on number 25? I don't think we did.
Yeah, we did.
I thought we did. After you discussed it, then I thought we didn't vote.
I just had that one question. It was afterwards.
Okay.
Let me do it again.
As long as we got a vote on it, that's okay.
We did. You're the tallier of all things, Roxanne. Did we vote?
Yeah. She had the question afterwards.
All right. Thank you.
I'd authorize $25,000 from the general fund to complete the development of an automatically updated criminal history database available via the Internet to law enforcement agencies throughout Lorraine County. Actual cost for work necessary to pull information from case management systems of Lorraine and Oberlin Municipal Courts will be an additional $25,000. The Commissioners last year agreed to contribute $33,000 of local monies to attract matching funds of $99,000 from Ohio's Office of Criminal Justice.
Mr. Cordez.
Commissioners, there will not be any direct payment from the general fund, but I have been notified that there's some excess funds in the certificate title fund that are being returned to the general fund, so this would be a wash to the general fund. And we'll be completing that transfer next week, and I have the authorization from Clerk of Court. So I urge you to approve this so we can move on with this very important issue.
So the general fund will be reimbursed through the clerk's office?
Yes, and I already have authorization in hand.
And I see the clerk of courts is in the audience, and he's shaking his head yes. Thank you.
I saw the thumbs up, so I took that as a yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nabokowski. I'll so move. Second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vasey?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I'd authorize the filing of the Lorraine County Sheriff's Fiscal Year 2001, 2002 Dare Grant Application through the Ohio Attorney General's Office in the amount of $13,867, which represents 50 percent of the base salary of one dare officer for nine months. The local match from the general fund will be $13,867. I'd authorize the President to execute on behalf of the board.
Sheriff's Committee is here. I'm sure you'd like to tell us about the sheriff. Good morning.
Good morning. Phil Summey, Lorraine County Sheriff. First of all, I'd like to go back a little bit to that CAFIS system that Scott Willis had talked about, and I just want to thank also County Administrator Jim Cordez. You know, he was a catalyst in getting this thing moved. Actually, that's going to save the county money because when they moved out of the Lorraine County Community College, they were paying rent out there. Now that it's at Alaria PD, there is no rent being paid that way. We were going to have him at the sheriff's office, but I don't have any room out there for him. So Chief Matters in Lorraine Police Department graciously accepted to have him be there. And that will be an excellent system that everybody in Lorraine County will be able to use. It's not only, right now felonies go down to BCI in London, Ohio, and they check through the National Crime Information Center. This will allow us to also load misdemeanors in which don't go down to the state. So if you get a misdemeanor arrest and they're fingerprinted, you put it in that system. Any arrests later, it possibly could match them to them, which we don't have that capability right now. So I'd like to thank the Commissioners for approving that also, and Scott Willis from Alaria, he did a lot of work on this, and that's an excellent program. Getting back to this grant, it actually was kind of a shock to me because last Friday I got a call from the Attorney General's Office asking why they haven't received our grant for the dare funds. And I explained to them that I never got an application. And apparently, there was a snafu that a lot of them didn't get sent out to the sheriff's offices. So we were under the gun when we came in Tuesday morning that we had to scramble to apply for this money right away. And actually, there is no matching monies or anything else. Fred Hughes, as you know, is our dare officer, and obviously, his salary is paid out of the general fund, so this will actually save money of the $13,867 that we get from the state to offset his salary. So like, there is no matching money or anything. So we have till tomorrow to get this in the mail and send it back to the state. So that's why we're kind of under the gun, and I appreciate you getting it on the agenda right away.
So right now, we're paying 100 percent of his salary?
No, we got a grant from last year. This will just be the continuing grant for next year.
Continue the grant?
Yes, that's correct, Commissioner.
So this is, okay. So this is nothing new.
I'll so move. Second.
Any more discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vasey?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you, Sheriff. Shirley?
Shirley R. Johnson, Oberlin, Ohio. I wonder if Mr. Summey would explain how the current dare program is run, what its program is, because past programs within the schools were abandoned because they were considered ineffective. So it'd be interesting to know what this money is being used for.
I'm sure the sheriff would like the opportunity to tell us what's going on with this.
Yes, I don't know which programs you're talking about directly, but I know Fred Hughes does all the schools in townships, or anybody that asks us to do it. Obviously, a lot of the cities have their own dare officers that handle the cities. We also do go into some cities if they ask us to. We've been in the Sheffield Lake. But he not only does dare, but he also does safety town. So we're willing to accept anybody that would want him to come out, and obviously, if he's not tied up in the townships doing them, then he will go into any cities or villages if it's requested.
You know, I've attended a lot of those programs that he's put on in the schools, and it's amazing to me to find out the relationship between the officer and the kids and how they recognize them. And I think it builds a trust in the police department, children's kind of good neighbor trust.
I agree with you, Commissioner. It's an excellent program. He does, I've seen when I was out at the fair with him, kids are walking up to him, and 25 years old now, and they remember him when they had him in dare and safety town. So it is a good program.
And it's very effective in Amherst. We have our officer lesson. It's very effective and very positive in our community, so.
Yes.
I think it's well-received by the grade level. It's either fourth or fifth grade level.
Yes, fifth and sixth.
Fifth and sixth. It's well-received by those grade-level students. They look up to the officer with a great deal of respect, so I think it's a wonderful program.
I agree. Hope that answered your questions. Thank you.
Item number 29.
Need to amend Resolution Number 01-664.
Did we vote? Did we vote?[1586.32] We did. You know, it's contagious.
What happens is if you go off the norm. We have a system, so it's not just me.
I just want to make you feel honest.
I feel much better now, thank you.
Madam Clerk, I'm sorry. Number 29. I think Ron Keel.
Amendment Resolution Number 01-664 that was adopted July 19, 2001, for a fund transfer of $149,116.91 for the Children and Families Council. This amendment is to reflect a change from a fund transfer to advance, and this should read "from the Children and Family Council Fund to the General Fund for PRC purposes."
So they're transferring this money back from their fund to the general fund? Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct, Commissioner.
Well, good morning, John Thing. He's quiet until we talked about money. Are there any other questions on this amendment, then? Also move.
Second.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vasey?
Aye.
Okay. Further comments, Mr. Cordez?
Simply that we need the executive session, as I requested earlier, and I have nothing additional this morning.
Okay. Assistant County Prosecutor, Mr. Ennis?
No report this morning.
Commissioners' report.
Commissioner Vasey?
Yes. Rita McFay and I attended the Corsa meeting Thursday -- I'm sorry, Friday before last, and Corsa has joined up with the Ohio Department of Public Safety, the Ohio State Highway Patrol, and the Office of the Governor's Highway Safety Representative, and they're all teaming up together for a statewide campaign on safety belt use. And I have to tell you, State Highway Patrol is really out there and looking for people to stop because of them not seeing a little belt across our shoulder. Last year, more than half of all Ohioans who died on our roadways in motor vehicle crashes were unbelted. While a safety belt may not have prevented all these deaths, experts predict it could have saved many. One person dies in a fatal accident every 12 minutes. 114 people die every day. 40,000 people die every year. In a 23-year span, the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration estimated seatbelts saved the lives of more than 100,000 people. That's more than the entire population of Youngstown, Ohio, and equals the population of Marion, Athens, and Maslin combined. 75 percent of all serious motor vehicle accidents occur within 25 miles of a person's home. With those odds, you have a better chance of having a crash during a quick trip to the grocery store for a gallon of milk. Anyway, they encouraged the Commissioners that were at Corsa to bring back these items. We've got two yard signs, and I brought these back, and I'm asking that these be put, one at 911 and possibly one at the Sheriff's Department. So Sheriff Stamedy, if you don't mind, would you bring one back with you? And they also gave us these, this, what would you call it?
Banner.
Banner.
Let me help.
Straight.
Got it? Here, why don't I get it?
Here.
Man's weight impression here.
And that's kind of to remind us, maybe we can put this down in the lobby, or if you have a better suggestion, Sheriff, maybe you might have a better suggestion where it could be placed.
I already drew that. Okay.
What do you think?
The lobby would be funny. Yeah. I love the parking garage before they leave.
Or in the front of the building.
Yeah.
Well, anyway, we're.
Wind suction will take it off.
Where would you like it to be placed?
Well, why don't we give it to the administrator and ask him to find an appropriate place?
And watch it.
If it's possible, maybe we could hang it in the front of the building, and more people would -- it might be more visible.
We get a lot of traffic down Third Street. We can hang that in between the lower levels of the parking deck and get a lot of visibility along Third Street if you'd like.
Okay, appreciate that.
I'll have that done by the maintenance crew.
Thank you. And one other thing. The CD, the Chronicle Telegram, I guess had a cartoon of the Justice Center in Sunday's paper that I thought was very offensive, because there was like 120 people that assisted the architects in the design and the floor space and everything for our $46 million building compared to an $8 million building that the city is doing. And I think, you know, of course, if you're talking almost $50 million, it is more time-consuming, and it's worth the time that we spent in this project. So I found that very offensive, not only to the Commissioners, but also to the architects and the people that assisted the architects. And I just had to say something about that. Sorry, no offense to the reporter, because she is an excellent reporter, does an excellent job, and is a very honest person.
Boy, you're working on a good story on this one.
She just crawled onto the desk.
She is. I find our reporters here are very honest, and I really appreciate working with both of you. And I just had to say something about that. I'm sorry if I offended anyone else, but.
I still haven't seen it yet. I just keep wishing you'd work on my weight problem now. Just toned down that cartoon just a little bit.
Commissioner Moore?
Are we going to have a public meeting on Tuesday? Because I asked to see if we should discuss anything. I think I mentioned it to you. Do you think we need it, or no?
Well.
We said we're going to have one, and we didn't, because we didn't really need to have one, so do we need one or not?
Did we set something for October 25 with the architects, an update on the Justice Center?
Well, we can talk about that, too. Let me address Commissioner Moore's question first, and then I'll address Commissioner You were desirous of having an administrative session to possibly talk about the sewer rate that we charge for our package payments for our six districts.
The whole sewer issue itself.
The whole sewer issue.
Yes.
We can do that in the administrative session, if you like.
Do you think we need it now, or do you want to wait until everyone can review the report that just came in?
I shared the materials with the Board, each Board member, yesterday. That would be up to your colleagues, whether they have time to get through that material by Tuesday.
I just received mine this morning.
Would you rather wait then?
Yeah, I think I would like to.
On sewer rates?
On sewer rates.
I haven't received mine yet.
Okay, we can -- let's see, next week is, what, the 11th? And then, so maybe we'll talk about it.
The 19th?
Well, that's our regularly scheduled administrative meeting anyway, is it not?
Well, I don't think we have.
We said first -- yes, we did. We had first and Third Tuesdays.
Oh, the 18th, yeah.
It was part of the motion.
Oh, was it what? The first and what?
First and Third Tuesdays.
Oh, first and third? Okay, well then.
Was it not, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay, so the third Tuesday will be the 18th September? Okay.
We have the childcare provider payments due that day, so.
Okay.
We have to meet anyway.
My apologies. I just figured since we didn't meet that.
So you want the sewer issue?
Yeah, that's okay then.
The 18th?
Yeah, that's fine. That's one of the issues. I mean, I'm sure it'll be up to.
There'll be others as we develop. Madam Clerk, will you ensure that Mr. Januzzi and Mr. Clowney are notified of that work session? We'll need their attendance there, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, to address Commissioner Vasey's question, I have requested that the Board have a -- it could be a work session, or it could be right after one of our meetings. My understanding is that October 26, we will be.
25th.
5th, excuse me. Thank you for the correction. We will be unveiling our new and improved Justice Center. Contrary to some of the things you read in the newspaper, we are on track. We are making significant progress with that project. The new renderings, floor diagrams, and listing of spaces and so forth will be available that day for the Board and public scrutiny. Commissioner Moore had mentioned to me that he may like to do that in an administrative session on Tuesday, and I have not had a chance to coordinate between the various Board members to get additional guidance on that issue. So I guess now is the goodest time, as I need to establish the flavor of the Board on this issue. Do we want to do it on Tuesday at an administrative session, or do we want to do it on Thursday after our regular Board meeting? The architects will be here. There'll be a little bit of show and tell. We'll have quite a bit of displays to exhibit. It's up to the Board.
The schedule that they sent was for October 25.
I would prefer the 25th, because it would -- I don't believe it's going to be televised on a Tuesday, and I think the public should be able to see this, and it should be on the television.
Do we have any?
Mr. Ennis?
We have the Illyria annexation.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, but that's -- we thought after an hour.
Okay.
Illyria Township. I'm glad you're keeping track of us. I discussed this with Jim yesterday. We tossed around about when we might have it. What did you finally decide?
It would be inappropriate for me to decide for this Board when they should have this meeting. I decided that.
When did you decide? What did you decide what recommendation you would make to us? That's not more appropriate.
I really don't have a recommendation, since there's a dichotomy with thinking on this by the various Board members.
It's called backup.
That's a big word.
So I am available, and I will make your contracted vendors available at your leisure, whatever the majority of the Board thinks.
Okay, how about this question? How long do you think this discussion could last, seeing the previous discussions have a tendency to run a little more than 15 minutes?
I think it's going to.
You said an hour.
I said about an hour.
You think an hour?
I think an hour.
So I think we ought to allow an hour for the Illyria Township annexation.
Correct. Let me add this. It'll go as long as this Board wants it to go. You own the gavel, I said, so.
There's no gavel here.
Well, you just get to bang your pen. So the length of the meeting is actually up to how many questions the Board has.
I'm sure we'll have a few.
What time is the Township annexation?
10:30.
10:30? So the options that were given to us were to schedule this at 11:30 on that day, or at 1:30 in the afternoon.
I prefer 1:30, because I'm going to need to eat.
We were afraid to let you out of the building.
We could go 1:00. About 1:00 o'clock.
We'll send somebody with you to bring you back from lunch.
I'm not going to eat on TV. Come on. You've seen me eat. You don't want that on TV.
I don't care. I just want to make sure that I agree with Commissioner Vasey that it should, because I think it's a special interest, and since the newspapers have decided to give this such publicity.
I think we ought to see them what they're doing by televising.
What the real issue is, and not the perceived issue.
A couple of issues, Commissioner, please, if I may. Number one, if we want to televise our session, when we end our Board session, we end. So we're going to have to have -- we're going to have to bring Hal in for a second session if we break the meeting. That's number one. And number two, we do have some members of the public that a large break in the meeting would be inconvenient for some of our regular attendees.
Can't we take a 10-minute break in between?
Yeah, we go 11:30 then.
And you can grab a sandwich in your office.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
He could bring sandwiches for all of us.
Last time, he had to go over to Candy Bar's.
Once again, the pleasure, but I just needed to point out that a couple of those issues.
So 11:30 on the 25th?
11:30, did you say, Commissioner Moore?
I didn't say that. I'm just asking.
Well, what did you just say? You did say 11:30.
I think I said 10:23 Tuesday.
11:30.
11:30 is fine, if that's okay with the Board.
Okay.
Well, I'm asking if it's okay with you. You're part of the Board.
I know. That's fine.
All right. Then I think we've arrived at 11:30 on the 25th.
Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate the thought given to this.
And we will hear, according to their document, the redesigned development documents to the county Commissioners with estimates and reviews.
You are going to get the complete bellywick.
All right.
You feel confident? Yeah, I can see it.
I'm very confident.
This is my.
Contrary to certain people, we are on track and doing fine, and the Commissioners have not been stirring the pot. Things are going well.
I had to throw you that little softball there.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Did you have anything else, Commissioner Moore?
Well, a lot of people talk when I want to talk.
I noticed. And I noticed, because this is something I wanted to say, but they all said it first, so it's okay, because.
That's fine. I just wanted to talk about the public meeting on the sewer issues.
Okay, so we've got that established.
That's established.
The third Tuesday at 9:15 we're going to start? 9:30?
The childcare. We've been doing 9:15.
So we're going to meet to start at 9:15? We'll do the childcare, and then move right into the administrative session. Okay. And then, just as a piggyback, I want to go one step further. Since Mr. Brubaker resigned from the design team, there have been two letters that have followed, and I think both of them are worthy of note. One came from the -- that's the wrong set of papers. I don't know why he was writing about that. One of them came from Randy Gardner, who is the president of Collins, Gordon &amp; Bostwick, and that was followed, preceded by a letter from Michael Scaparetti, who is vice president of construction management for RP Carbon. And each of those firms indicated to us that while it was unfortunate, Mr. Brubaker decided that he did not want to be involved with this project anymore, that there's certainly other people, and it was evidenced this morning. This project is on target. And the schedule that they have submitted to us calls for a groundbreaking ceremony on May 3 of 2002, and I think that that's worthy of note.
Wedding anniversary.
Oh.
I remember that. I'll display some cards now.
All the Commissioners got a copy of that revised schedule. I sent it around myself. And if our friends at the Chronicle Telegraph or the Morning Journal would like a copy of that, I'm sure the Commissioners make it available. That schedule points out key milestones that I think are extremely important, and that's talking about when we go out to bid, when we expect the bids to be back, when we expect to award, when we expect to break ground. So keeping track of five or six significant milestones that'll tell us how we're progressing, not the nuances of the day-by-day stuff, but it's the big milestones. If you want a copy of that, the Commissioners have it. It has been stated that we may not be out to bid until the spring, or we're going out to bid in the winter, in February. We will be out to bid. We will be receiving the bids back in the spring. We will be awarding those bids in the spring, and we will be breaking ground the first week of May, guaranteed.
And if you'd like a copy of the letters from the architect?
I've already faxed them, both to Phil and to Kristen. Okay.
You guys are getting a lot of recognition today, aren't you?
Well, it's because it's their job to report what we're doing. Thank you for your help. Shirley, you had a question?
Yes, Shirley R. Johnson, Oberlin. It's not clear from this discussion you've had what will be your official system for notifying people of whether you are or are not going to have meetings on Tuesday. Two of us turned up for the past meeting that you didn't have, and I'd like to be sure that there's some -- I mean, actually, according to the Sunshine Law, they fall under special meeting category, and there is supposed to be notification of some sort.
I think our notification is the fact that we've passed the resolution. What does the resolution say, Mrs. Clerk? You have it in front of you? Don't you just carry that at your fingertips?
The first and third Tuesday, is that what you're referring to?
Yes, and Mr. Ennis told us we've established those meetings, and how did you say it, Jerry? I think it's appropriate for you to speak for yourself.
Well, by resolution, we set a standard meeting, so it's going to be.
We can all talk at the same time.
We are set for the first and third Tuesday, Tuesday of each month, and that's now.
That's by resolution.
It can always occur that has happened with this one, that they are going to be canceled.
We also made mention that on the Thursday, I think before, the first or third Tuesday, if a Commissioner had an issue, it'd be brought up, and if not, we wouldn't have that Tuesday meeting.
We didn't have a meeting on the 30th, though, and so therefore, we go back to the previous meeting, the 23rd. And I think it's more of a courtesy issue for people.
Right.
Is that what we're talking about, Shirley? Am I wrong?
Well, no. As I recall, when you passed this resolution, you said it was going to start on September 4. And we just took -- and we didn't see anything in the newspaper or otherwise that it was going to be canceled, so we turned up.
Well, and I just want you to know, Shirley, that I called from home that morning to see if we were having a meeting, because I didn't come in right at 9:30, since I was if we were having a meeting, because I didn't come in right at 9:30 since I was told we weren't. So, please feel free, at any time, if you have a question, to call. I realize that's an inconvenience, but it's much better to call and find out than to show up, and I've been treated to that some other places. You know, I thought I went to the right place in the right time and found out a change was made, so we appreciate your flexibility on this issue.
Well, but I do think that when a meeting is canceled, there should be, according to the Sunshine Law, official notice, we shouldn't have to call to see if you're going to hold a meeting.
Well, now, we need to talk about that, because Jerry didn't say anything about an official notice that the meeting is canceled. We have to give notice that there's going to be a meeting. Is there a process for us to cancel a meeting?
Again, it's a matter of courtesy, there's no requirement that you notify regarding a cancellation.
Don't the papers have a public service area where they do that free of charge?
But they wouldn't necessarily know what we're doing, and I'm gonna say again, I called that morning to find out if, in fact, we were or weren't having a meeting. There was question on my mind.
Commissioners, I spoke with the clerk on this, too, and she initially was going to call some of our regular attendees at the meeting and let them know that we weren't going to have a session if that was going to occur. Unfortunately, I instructed her not to do that, because you start calling one, then you get a list, and you gotta call 21, and 41, and 51, and I don't want to establish a procedure, we start calling people individually of different meeting issues. I think what we can do, if you would like, I think WEOL would probably give us a small 10-second word that the board meeting is going to be, the administrative session is not going to occur. If you'd like, I can discuss that with them. I'm not familiar that you guys put that stuff, but you may put it into the papers under your current, what is it, current activities or meetings, and I think there's a little section in each paper where they list upcoming events. I'm not sure if that's a public service or not.
I think it is.
But maybe we can utilize that. But what I would suggest, more than anything else, though, that will work, and I don't know if everybody has access, but Ms. Blaiver's been working on our website, that we have her posted on our website, whether we're having the administrative session or not, that would probably be the best. What do you think, Karen?
Not everybody has the, can get to the website, so I would think if we can get the public service and the radio and the newspapers, at least check if they would give that free service, and if they do, then just call them the day before, whenever their deadline is.
Probably with the newspapers, we probably need a lot of lead time on that, so I'm thinking that WEOL may be our best choice.
Yeah, one part to check.
And then we control the websites, so we can post that pretty quick. Maybe those two things would help, if that sounds like we're reaching some kind of compromise on the issue. I don't want to get into the habit of making phone calls to people, I think it's a poor procedure to develop, it's just gonna lead us into trouble down the road, then we're gonna have it, well, somebody didn't get called, and why didn't they get called?
Do you have any objections to check everything, the media, the newspapers, the radio, the web, we can do, that's easy.
I still think the simplest way to resolve the issue, and I, you know, do whatever you choose. But I wanted to know, so I made a phone call. I didn't bother to look in the newspaper, listen to the radio station, or check email. I called, I talked right to the horse's mouth.
Actually, to support your position, Commissioner, that was my visceral response on this to Madam Clerk, was, why didn't they call ahead of time? All right, so I do share your sentiments on that. But I'll check with some of those sources, but we'll definitely post it on our website. So that we can do, that's in the house, okay?
Okay, old business.
... through approval enter into a two-year service agreement with First Communications of Akron, Ohio, to provide the county's internet access and email accounts. The total monthly charge is $1,055.43. An agreement does contain a 30-day written cancellation clause. Need to authorize the present to execute on behalf of the board.
This issue has been on hold because I asked the administrator to review and make a recommendation, I don't believe he's done that yet. This morning, I received a letter addressed to Mrs. Pleatman from Altel, which speaks to some of the issues that I asked be looked at, so I don't know what the pleasure the board is regarding this matter, I'm not prepared to vote on it today.
Well, I think it's time that we do something, because it's necessary now, and Karen, I believe you put something together for the commissioners, would you give us the presentation, please?
Well, I received that letter this morning, and what it was is that Altel had revised their quote, and even doing so, they're still a little bit more expensive to what we're currently paying now. And if you would, I would like to entertain you with a very brief presentation. Can we do that?
What's the definition of brief? What's that, is it five minutes? Okay.
Yes, well, Cory's gonna break it, likes me. That's good.
Commissioner Blair's gonna have a crick in the neck with him.
That's fine, I can move. It's fine. Yes, leave it there.
Okay, so what we have here, when I first started this in January, what I was looking for was to save costs and to get better service. And what I found out, and the first thing I did is I went to Altel because they were local, and they were one of the biggest IP providers we have. There was some concerns with Altel in that they couldn't support me past the firewall. I have 35 years' experience, but I'm not specialized in, like, the exchange service, so they said they would have the, you know, charge to the additional $125 an hour. Well, then I went looking for the backbone, and First Communications, we have them right now giving us the long-distance service with Sprint. So I went to First Communications and was surprised to find that I could save quite a bit of money. As you can see, with First Communications, we're gonna save $2,634.84 a year. That's a grab I can't use, because Altel came in with another, this morning, just before I put this up. But anyway, the savings continues on, because if we go to First Communications and go with this T-1 line, we will be housing our site right here with the county, right here downstairs, instead of paying an IP company. So there's a year of, a year savings of $2,880 additional, just for our website, and that's just for Solid Waste and the commissioner's website. Now I had, the Sheriff's Department contacted me yesterday, they were interested in getting, joining the band, getting their website online, and so there's some more savings. And I don't know, one other county offices have websites and, you know, what they're paying, but this is what I do know, it's just between Solid Waste and Commissioner.
You have Golden Acres, you have Job Family Services, you have ETA, they all have websites.
Okay, so they can, they can actually house their website right here in county, and then there's some more savings. So it actually grows. What do I want to do right now? As you can see, we're going from Lorain County to the Altel loop, to Erie Shores, and out to the internet backbone. What we're going to do, what I'd like to do, is go from Lorain County, and of course, we have to go through that Altel loop, and right out to the internet backbone. Now in between, email is really a problem, it's no secret we have a problem with email. The way it is right now, someone sends us email, it goes over to Erie Shores' site, stays at Erie Shores until we go, the end user goes and picks it up. There's been problems where the email was getting lost in between, nobody knows where it went. The proposed idea is right from Lorain County, out to the internet backbone, not be known between, from the internet to Lorain County. So then we said, okay, we can't get somebody to represent the backbone locally in Lorain County, that's one exception that I will look into outside the county for vendors when we can't get it in the county. So I went to the four main backbones, and still Sprint comes out at the lowest. So what are we looking at? Lower costs, increased bandwidth, what that means is more people can use this T-1 line. We have less contacts with troubleshooting problems, that is, if our system goes down, if we can't get into the internet, there's only two things that could be possible, either Sprint, which would mean quite a bit of the world's gonna be down, or here, downstairs, then we would be held accountable for, but the troubleshooting is limited. We'll have 255 IP addresses instead of eight, and I was just asked last week by one of the systems managers, that we need to get more IP addresses, we're running out of IP addresses. We have room for growth without unnecessary costs, because we're already gonna have the full-blown T-1, and, but I'm not saying that there'll never be any further cost, I won't go that far, because the more we have needs, obviously, the more cost is gonna come up. If we have a site such as the sheriff's site, if he would want to have user intervention, people that's on the internet that wants to come in and they wanted to search us or whatever, well, we're talking more cost, but the way it is right now, if we just use our site as informational, no, there won't be no more cost, we've got that right there, but if you want more service, of course, it's gonna be, you know, we have to consider that. But for the way it is right now, we're okay. Dependability would be much better. Any questions?
I heard that they're costing $5,000 for some additional maintenance costs, or maintenance support on this?
No, what's, I accidentally put in one of the quotes was for the things supplies I needed to park for, that was accidentally put in there. The other two was for engineers to come in and assist me with overseeing the job site. The one company was People Vision, they're the ones that helped, that assisted me with getting our domain name and making any charges for that. So they're just gonna make sure things are done correctly, it's a point time, it's not a...
No, I know, how much is that, what's that, do you remember?
$2,000 total, max. And what I did is I overestimated, because I didn't want to have to come back to commissioners, you know how it is with computers, you never know, like, you get musical, you don't expect it, but that's all that was for.
And you, do you have the cost, I mean, it sounded like the sheriff is supportive of this type of, oh, he's interested, maybe just looking at this type of assistance, maybe, is that what you were saying, or referring to?
I'm getting advice, can you go out and get calls to show the county, what we're saving?
Yeah, I was looking for something, commissioners, for information purposes, like for visitations at the jail, phone numbers, there's a lot of different sexual predators you could put on the internet now, there's a lot of sheriff's offices that have these websites themselves. And she, Karen had asked me, I was looking for like a database, and I said, no, something just for information purposes only. There's a lot of questions that are asked at sheriff's sales, who can post these answers as far as the questions go on there, so I was looking for something in that order. And I figured if the county had one, I just wanted to join in, instead of trying to go out and get my own website, that obviously I'm gonna have to pay.
Right, now, we have other websites out there, like you said, ETA, and is there a way you can get everybody to cancel, because we're all paying this eventually, it comes to here, and we delegate to them now.
Commissioners, what's happened, it's been rather dispersed over the last few years. I named a few that we have a bit of authority over to coordinate where they go. There's others in the county, but some of the data people are a bit territorial. We probably, I would recommend, if we started doing this, that we consolidate our agencies first, give it a good show, and then draw people in, because we're doing such a good job.
But you're looking at, right now, let's just look, I mean, this is a great presentation, Karen, too, thank you. But you're also looking at, I'm looking at $3,000 that you're looking to spend, possibly. We're saving $4,800, you're only looking at $1,800, and everyone's thinking, we're all talking about something very minute here, maybe, but once we make this move, it's done, I think, okay? And I would rather see, I like, I mean, this is the first time I've heard something I wanted to hear, which is the possibility of combining all these agencies on this website, which means we're not saving $4,800, we're probably saving, who knows, but we don't. I mean, can we just put this on the agenda, so I wanna vote on this next Thursday? I'd like to vote on this, and I think if you could just get me the letters, I think we got a letter from Altel that we'd like to have, I think we're waiting for, I don't understand, but I think we're waiting for something in this one. Are you waiting, or you, I know it's a priority issue for you, Jim.
Yeah, what you're waiting on is for me to review the Altel proposal, and then I have to make...
Can we buy online this next Thursday? Do you think?
I'll call them, I'll move it up.
I think, can we just say we're, oh, I'm sorry.
But I think it's pretty simple. Altel, for one thing, is higher, and I think it's unfair that Altel should come in with a second bid, and the other companies that aren't, all have the opportunity.
I agree.
Commissioner, we never went out with a formal RFP on this process.
Yeah, but it was a quote, we got quotes from other companies, and now you're putting Altel ahead of the other companies and allowing them to come in with a second quote, and it's still higher.
No, the other company wants a minimal lower quote, that's absolutely fine, we'll take that, too.
But they weren't requested to do so, the only ones that were requested was Altel, and even though...
Oh, I don't believe they were requested, Commissioner Vacy, I think they responded to a request for information and came up with this.
Well, they were only, they were probably the only ones that were aware, that they could come in with a second quote, and they're still higher than anybody's energy that they can find out.
Can I, can I please add something here? We're looking at Altel, Erie Shores, Sprint. Altel is offering what we have today, internet service providing.
The middleman.
Right. Sprint, we're going to Sprint because they're the big boys, if you will, they're actually the backbone of the internet. So we're looking at a whole different ballgame, and you're not comparing apples to apples when you're saying Altel and Sprint.
No, but we're not using Erie Shore as the middleman. Right now, we are, correct?
Well, Altel would be, too.
Are we using it right now, Erie Shore?
Yes, we are, yes.
What we're doing is we're going to separate and go direct, correct?
That's what we would like to do.
And whenever you get a divorce, it's always nasty, so we wanna make sure, I just wanna, all I'm saying is, I would, I'm willing to vote on this next Thursday, if you, can you get me letters of support from the sheriff, from the other agencies, to say that we will piggyback with this?
The other agencies that I mentioned, we don't need letters of support, they work for us.
They work for us, so as long as, can you identify who these agencies are, we can say, this is what we're doing as a county, we're pulling everybody together under our webpage, and this is what we're gonna be saving. I mean, that's I'm asking.
What I would ask, to amplify what you're saying, Karen, we have to look at the contracts with those other agencies, while we can compel them to join with us, we may have some contracts that we need to continue out with their current hosting IP.
And that's always been my problem, is that we're starting something again, which is, this is saving money, we're gonna be saving some money here, but you know what, just, maybe there's 15 of these things, I mean, what did you say, there was like, how many in the county that have their own web access?
Oh, it's...
We don't wanna have that discussion right now, but, I mean, I think this is the beginning of something that we can correct and lead by example, and I think if you can give me some examples of, like, what you just said today, you just said that, that's the first time I heard something that I wanted to hear.
Commissioner, I'd like to say, I wouldn't wanna look at this like, per se, as a divorce, it's not a divorce. It's not even, the object is not even looking for a way to separate from our current ISP. The main point here is growth, leap, and progress.
And saving money.
Yeah, at the same time.
And I have one more thing, you know, Probate, Judge Horvath has been asking us for additional funding for a computer person, and there, I think we've laxed on the opportunity to get that department to join with us, because from, it's my understanding, from the sense of his letters, that he would be very willing to use our computer person to save the expense of an additional person, and furthermore, she can use some help. So we're thinking about hiring someone for Karen, and yet, you have the judge that's asking for another additional person, when we could just hire one person and try to build up a relationship with Probate, and it could start there, that he might join the network. But I think we're delaying this so long that he's gonna be getting very impatient, from the sound of his last letter, I think he's kind of impatient, as it stands now.
No comment, I haven't seen the letter.
Well, we've had two, or possibly three of them already from him.
So does that have to come up under, is this still gonna be in our old business next week, or is it, can we just put it on the agenda?
It'll be under old business until we resolve the matter.
So what are we actually...
Can we resolve it next Thursday? I hate to do this, I know it's not a priority, but I think it's been on there.
You can resolve anytime you want, you can vote on it, so...
I'll vote on it next Thursday.
So what's the benefit of waiting, what are you expecting?
Not just one, I mean, just one more week, you're gonna get me, can you get me a list? And can you see if this is within our local preference? This number right now looks like they're within 10 percent. Can you make sure we're not in violation of our own resolution?
We have not, we, you asked, you passed me a note, and you asked a interesting question, and that was, can we apply local preference to this, because Altel's a local provider? I have to look at that, we haven't thought about that much with service providers, we've done it with vendors where we've actually purchased products.
We should be going with everybody, I mean...
I would have to look at, I'd have to talk to, I have to get some wisdom from Mr. Ennis on this, as to applying it to service providers. I wanna be a bit cautious with that, we do have a lot of local folks that provide services to us, and I wanna make sure that we're not opening up something that, you know, we won't be able to get the genie back in the bottle with, but it's an interesting question.
I had to use that.
But the object was to eliminate the middleman, wasn't it?
Oh, this is, I think we're heading down the path we want.
And Altel is the middleman again. So there's higher costs, and there's still a middleman, which we wanted to eliminate.
When I talked to the representative after the last meeting, he had called me the very next day, we discussed this, and he, I asked him if he was a Tier 1 provider, which is the backbone, there's only four main companies that are the backbone of the internet, and that would be Sprint, MCI, Quest, and I forgot the last one.
Well, we're obviously not gonna go with Quest, we fired them, so I don't recommend that we go with Quest.
Look, how long have we had, how long has this been going on, four years? How long have we been in the system?
I guess this has been going on for two or three years.
Two or three years, seven days, can, I mean, I like what you did today, can I vote next Thursday? I mean, I'm not asking, I mean, is it gonna, seven days? I like what you did today, I appreciate what you did.
It's been going on for a couple months, what's seven days?
Exactly. Thank you, Karen, it was a great presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, new business? Oh, I guess that's the items that we will, okay. Board correspondence, I move the reading to wave, but I would like to note, item, specifically item number 13, is a permit granted by the county engineer for the installation of a six-inch sanitary sewer tap on the west side of East River Road in Carlisle Township. This is the first installation and connection of the interceptor sewer that was the effort of our assistant prosecutor, worked out with the city of Aluria, and I was told that this is the first use of that, and I just wanted to make mention of that, because I think that's a plus for Lorain County. And I move to wave the reading.
We can start reading some other stuff.
Thanks, Mary Jo, well, we could read it if we want to.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Madison?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Okay, and then, public comment, David Ashen first.
Thank you, commissioners, I have a couple of things today. First of all, in the absence of a representative of the Association of Nonprofits Organizations of Lorain County, I simply wanted to advise the commissioners that new information has come out about nonprofit organizations throughout the country that is available on the web, and I've prepared a small packet, which I recommend be, through the administrator, turned over to the Director of Economic and Community Development for his benefit, which simply goes through the number and type of nonprofit and tax-exempt organizations in the country, then gives some information about nonprofit organizations state by state, then gives a breakdown of nonprofit organizations on a county level in Ohio, and finally breaks down in Lorain County, the number of nonprofit organizations, their expenses, their assets, their public support, and their total revenues, in about 28 different categories of nonprofit, from arts organizations to educational institutions and hospitals in Lorain County. And one thing you find from looking at this list is that the nonprofits in Lorain County have about $1.5 billion in assets that they spend approximately, I'm, hang on here, I think it's about $600 million a year, that, excuse me, that's, that's wrong. Yeah, that's right, $625 million a year they spend, and their total revenues are $712 million. A fair amount of that, of course, comes from governmental sources, either through contracts or, you know, scholarship support of students or something like that, but... But there, it also notes that about $80 million is contributed within Lorraine County or by others to organizations in Lorraine County. I just, I think he should have this simply because it's a census of organizations that's not always accounted for in, in some of what is done in the nature of planning and where our workers are and what's going on in the county. And it gives you, if you add it to the council of the Community Alliance, which tells you a lot about the units of government, and the Chamber of Commerce, which tells you a lot about the number of businesses and what they command and what the payroll is and things like that, it gives you a true picture of a, of a sector of Lorraine County that's not always, that's not always very visible. So, I have that for him, and as I say, it can go to anybody else who wants it. Second is something I wouldn't have mentioned if Commissioner Blair had, but Commissioner Blair and Director Twining were at a meeting I attended about 10 days ago over at Lorraine County Community College, that the Community Alliance, Community College, Public Services Institute all had a hand in putting on. It was a very interesting meeting, and I think all of the commissioners and several other department people would have been interested in it had they been able to attend. It had to do with Lorraine County and, and the digital economy and new technology and workforce development. And there was actually a lot of talk about government services provided by, via the Internet, registrations, license renewals, payments of fines and taxes, and all sorts of other things. And we actually were given the web addresses both of some counties and of, one of our speakers was especially fond of one of the provinces of Australia, and the government of Singapore have very interesting and complete user-friendly websites for both the transaction of business and the notification of the public about things that were going on. And I just, I thank the county commissioners for directly and indirectly supporting meetings like that. And I hope that there are systems for percolating some of the information that was transmitted at that meeting into planning and talking and thinking about the future of government services in Lorraine County. So, that's number two. And number three, Percy Shelley said that poets are the unacknowledged legislators of the world, and I'm sort of a, an unlicensed, not unprincipled, and uncompensated ambassador and liaison, I feel, for Lorraine County to some things that are going on outside Lorraine County, both taking some of what's going on here out and going to some things elsewhere and bringing them back here. And there's a meeting going on today, which I can't be at, but I went to a session yesterday of the Lake Erie Commission. The Lake Erie Commission is a state commission that has representation. It consists of the directors of the State Environmental Protection Agency, Department of Natural Resources, Department of Transportation, Department of Development, Department of Health, and Department of Agriculture all sit on that. They met over in the Mentor Lakefront Pavilion. You could hear the waves of Lake Erie, and they, they actually said they'd like to do that more often. They meet four times a year, twice in Columbus. Their headquarter, their staff is in Toledo, and usually they do have one other meeting a year somewhere on the lake. Last year, I understand, it was in Sandusky. And I've been around and been interested in civic involvements in Lorraine County six years, and I'd never really heard of this commission. But it really is an interesting bunch of folks with an interesting mission. And their, overall, their mission is, it has a lot to do with improving the quality of Lake Erie water, the ecosystem that Lake Erie, the sort of biosphere that it is, including all of the rivers that flow into it and waterfront that it contains. We learned yesterday, there's only about six and a half miles of truly publicly accessible lakefront in Ohio, and that one and a half miles of it is in this one place in manner where we were. And so, they showed people the manner lagoons. They, they just had a lot of different things going on there. There was a representative from the Great Lakes Protection Fund, which is a foundation into which all of the states contribute and from which all of the states surrounding the lakes and the provinces can draw. And I brought back toys for the commissioners and information, and more information for a couple of, of the commissioners' staff, and I just wanted to pass some of that out. But, but note that what's happening today is the 10th Annual Conference on Lake Erie. And one of the presentations today that I hope we do hear more about, I believe Pat Kano is there today on behalf of the Lorraine County Visitors Bureau. There were a couple of other people from Lorraine County yesterday at the meeting. They are not here today. I don't know if they're at today's session or not. Today is a, is a conference on Lake Erie. I've downloaded and sort of retyped the, the agenda for that for all the commissioners, for the administrator, and for the Director of Development. And the agenda from yesterday, you can see that NOACA is an advisory, an advisor to that commission, but NOACA wasn't there. So, some things that Lorraine County participates in hadn't been there. But I also brought information about Ohio's Coast Weeks, which are August 25 through September 23. And there's a lot going on on the Lake Erie coast. The one thing that is listed here from Lorraine County is, is an exhibit all month at the Inland Seas Maritime Museum in Vermilion. But I hope that over time, especially as there's discussion of both the, the Black River Site.
Black River rap?
Well, I'm thinking of that developing...
Oh, the Grove Site development.
Grove Site development.
Thank you, Jim.
And as discussions continue about the Port Authority of Lorraine County and its activity with the Port Authority of Lorraine, that, that there can be some consciousness that this enterprise is out there. They make grants for cleanup of various things. They, they do planning studies for multiple uses of lakefronts and talk a lot about those amenities. There is a major plan for protection and restoration of Lake Erie. I, I'm going to, I got one copy of that, and I think Ron Twining should have that. They also gave me, I've got them somewhere here, pens that look like they glow in the dark, but I think it's so you can find them if you drop them into the water of Lake Erie.
Oh, that's clever.
And I have those for the commissioners, for the administrator, and the Director of Development as well. And I just, as I say, hope that in the absence of the Seventh Generation Organization at this point and some other nonprofits in Lorraine County who would be more conversant with the activity of this, of this commission, that we recognize it as a resource that, that could really make some useful services and funds available to Lorraine County, and that it just be, I hope that, I look back through the correspondence of the, of the commissioners and the, the list that comes out that, that we always waive the reading of. And I don't see anything from the commission. Their next meeting is in Columbus, and it's in December, so I don't expect that we'll always have somebody there. But I just encourage people to take some look at it. And I, as I say, these two agendas I have for the commissioners and these others and some other materials.
Thank you, David. I just kind of piggyback on your comments. I think that's where we got the grant for the Carlisle Township model from the Lake Erie Protection Fund. And I have been to one of their meetings when they honored someone from our county. It was in Cleveland. So, we kind of have a tab on what they're doing.
Good.
Maybe not as systematically as we ought to, but thank you for this information. Very concise.
Thank you.
Mr. Kish?
My name Robert Kish, retired civil servant. And what Dave said is something that's very important, something that hasn't been going on, I don't feel, with the commissioners and the community in total respect. That's communications. We just had a discussion on how are we going to notify the people? Whether it's radio, whether you have to listen to radio. If it's a newspaper, you have to buy a newspaper. It seems quite simple. We set up two phone lines. One that announces all public meetings, what have you, at least a week in advance, not the day after in the newspaper. And two, another line that announces strictly for those from out of town that have to drive in here, those meetings that have been canceled. Quite simple, and it doesn't have to be a person. All that has to be is two phone lines dedicated to those purposes, and it can be a tape. I mean, if anybody has used a telephone lately, you will find nine times out of 10, you do not get a person, you get this tape. And tape is cheap. I don't know. Anyhow, First Amendment is pretty important. Our Constitution is imperfect. They had to amend it. Terrible. But I'm glad it's there. Allows me to speak before you. Commissioners, members of the press, and audience member. That's about it. There's nobody else around. I'm nobody, but I still pay taxes. There are other nobodies who pay taxes that may be watching. I have no idea. To them, I say, our cash cow is drying up. My favorite story, DIY, is gone. Rigid, known worldwide, is having a riff. R-I-F, are you familiar with the words riff?
I've been through those.
Reduction in force. There are other reductions in force. Others will follow. Others are following, unfortunately. As dairy farmers know, a cow dries up. To again obtain milk, it must be impregnated. The county impregnates its milk money supply with an appraisal. This refreshes the flow of milk, money, that is money, that will provide additional funds so that we can all share, all share in the magnificent edifice to be our justice center. In the ego-inflated words of Mr. Stanley Brubaker, designer architect, designer jeans, designer architect, he will be able, he will not be able to create the landmark, landmark he had hoped to design. He would not be able to create a distinctive product. This monument for a firm in St. Louis, not Ohio funds, not locally, at taxpayer, at working taxpayers' expense indicates fiscal irresponsibility in the face of current economic indicators. Someone once said, "There is enough for the needy. There will never be enough for the greedy." That guy was from India. Gandhi. Gracias, vaya con Dios.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else who wants to address the board this morning? If not, I move we go into executive session for the purposes as outlined by the county administrator.
Second.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Manson?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Have one of those.